Oh, we start the recording and everybody's leaving. Sorry, Jack, we're just on a hold because they gotta get their coffee.
Are we that boring, really?
Alright.
Morning, Jack.
Good morning.
Morning, Kim and Doug.
We haven't been able to end it, I suppose, if you want anybody interested. Yes, yes, sure, because we never.
Definitely should, definitely should.
Yeah, I can see the audio, let's go.
Alright.
Circling back now, I'm looking at time, so I'm Monday. That's fine.
Hey Cheryl, I was writing my numbers yesterday.
Now, is that right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Not to mention, yeah. The numbers, but uh.
Okay, seeing that all commissioners here, let's start the meeting. Commissioners meeting Wednesday, August twenty first, twenty twenty four, all commissioners are present. And which Commissioner Wasmack being present via Zoom. Starting off with public comment, as always, I offered up. Offered up, okay. Moving on to elected officials and department heads, Doug, are you just listening today? Do you have anything to bring forward?
I am just listening and I may be in and out a bit. As I have a couple of meetings, but just listening mostly.
Alrighty, thank you. Cheryl, you have anything this morning?
No.
Okay, Kim, do you have anything this morning? Okay, so we're gonna move on to schedule item, master agenda item number one, one, nine, five, behavioral health court semi in report. Alison Walsh is here to. And the action expected is to receive an informational as possible report on the last six months of operations. By the coordinator and project director. Go ahead.
Thank you, thanks for having me. For those don't know me, my name is Alison Walsh, I am the. Coordinator for the treatment court and I'm also the part of director for the treatment court and I also am coordinator for the behavioral health court programs for alternative sentencing and mental health. And I just wanna thank Doug, because without your case manager sheet, this presentation wouldn't be happening. You give it up with the PowerPoint.
Yeah, of course.
Alright, just for Jack.
Of course.
I have the PowerPoint here, you know. Give us one second. So I know this is supposed to be a semi annual report, however, not. To any thoughts of Davison, but I had some conflict, so it's. What I have and reporting on is eight months of data, basically ending August eighteen, so I finalized the data on there.
Just so you know, you could have used Davison's.
Well, actually, you guys, no, you guys, you guys canceled the meeting when I was presenting, I wasn't offended, but okay, it's.
I chose to do that, I said we wanna cancel the meeting you have.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, just, um, next slide, changes in programming. And there's gonna be a lot of updates to this, so. Mental health court state guidelines were released and they are guidelines, they are recommendations right now. So the mental health coordinator gathered monthly and edited them line by line, it's incredibly painful. And they are done and waiting for final approval. I still attend those monthly meetings. The behavioral health court program has hired a new clinical case manager, Emily LeBlair, who started April twenty second. The state had applied for a mental health court grant. Part of that grant was for to hire coordinator and to purchase a database, and that's gonna be for the entire state. So you will see when you see my budget submitted this year, I took out the line that I put in previously. So I'm gonna use money from the state to use their database. One great asset that we've been using a lot this year, Jeff Powell from Dublin has bikes for peace and he's given us probably at this point fifteen bikes. For all the programs. He collects the bikes from donations, he calls on Frankenbikes, he puts them together. He also donated bikes to Syria and to schools, and he's just an amazing human being. And more recently, it's announced, I think, last week, the state did hire a mental health coordinator, Tanya Pittman, who already works with the A R C, she's got a lot of. Grant experience and finance experience. She's attending our first meeting, I think, next week. So I'll have a lot more updates about where the state is going with mental health court soon. We're still similar to treatment court and incentive based program. So we offer gift cards for clients, make sure to show up for the U A's. Increase motivation, because the behavioral health court program, it's not as highly structured monitored. Treatment courts, they weren't getting sanctions for not showing up, so instead of being punitive, we just try incentivizing them, so they're getting that funding. And we're also using some of the funding from the friends, the local Cheshire County Friends Group. To give them twenty dollar gift cards when they complete the program. And we're also using contingency management program. All the programs, which is a five hundred slip, fishbowl. And they get to pull out of it, in the behavioral health court program, it's used to increase U A attendance, and so they do that twelve weeks, it's a true contingency management program. And if you have questions on that, I'll have to explain it. And if they don't show up, there's a list of sanctions they get. I'll tell you that, we don't do a lot of sanctioning in behavioral health court, it's a much less structured program than treatment court. And we are still providing phones for them and phone cards. And often gift cards, and more recently, we provided some housing at the Keenan, the Keenan has been a resource for us for housing, because the shelters have been completely packed. And so, we've worked out in arrangement with the city for all the programs, if we place someone for a week or so on the Keenan, the city is then picking them up. Which obviously increased the city's budget for housing, but it's also really helpful for us in placing people. You know, the treatment court is moving towards a housing first model, I'm assuming behavioral health court follow this. Moving on to the next slide.
Is, can I just ask a question?
Yes, good.
Um, to, to, first of all, have you guys? Uh, when you send somebody to the Keenan, do you guys actually go look at where the Keenan itself? I, I just, I'd be, I've heard that not great stories about the place, like, it's not well kept up.
Yes, we have all been home visits by probation officers there.
Yeah.
Uh, our problem is, we have no place.
Yeah.
And it's better than being homes.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I get, I get it.
And, I mean, here's the other thing, yeah, I know the conditions there, and I know management, however, like, for the few people that are there treatment court.
Yeah.
They kind of create a little community there and watch out for each other. So for that small group.
My thing is, I just don't know whether, if we, if we see that we're not comfortable with something, we report it to the codes department. And then they ask that the owner actually upgrade, update the, the, the situation. But I've heard, you know, like, people have to put barrels up against the doors, because the wind blows the doors open, because the doors don't lock. And that they have, that when they leave, they have to take just about everything with them, because there may be other people that walk in, because the doors don't lock and on some. So I'm just, I'm just saying that, that, I'm not saying for you, I understand the situation. Um, and the other thing would be. If they have, if they're, if they're, uh. People that are struggling with opiate addiction, could you utilize the, uh, the monies you have for housing too?
Yes, they do, so there's several, or, well. I don't know how much that current behavioral health court.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of that's for the treatment court, so the C H P program, which is the statewide program.
Yeah.
How they pronounce.
Yeah.
Um, and the treatment court, I have three different sources for housing.
Yeah.
I mean, the bigger issue is, and, and you'll see, and it'll be more relevant when we get to it, but I have the housing situation for. Behavioral health for population.
Yeah.
There are way more housed, there is a large section that's unowned. Lot of them, a lot more of them live with family than.
Yeah.
So. But the people that, for instance, we've only placed one person at the Keenan, but he, uh, couldn't live anywhere.
Yeah.
And was living in front of a church, and eventually they asked to leave, and has been no trespass from every single hotel. So at one point, we were using some of the hotels, but a lot of our population, all the programs were no trespass from every single hotel. So that's problematic, right?
Yeah.
Where we can put them, and the Keenan is the only one who never says, and actually, they have no trespass, one verse, right?
Yeah, right.
Uh, so it's, you're no just from the trespass from the Keenan, there's no. So it was Keenan, the old hotel.
Valley Green.
It's not like.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not saying, I know that you got what you, you know, and, and you're not the only one in that situation, is what I'm hearing. It's just, can we, is there a way that, you know, people can put pressure on? The, the code department to do an inspection of the facility, so that that puts pressure on the owner to make the upgrades, do it the right, the right process way.
Inspections is complaint driven.
Right, that's why I'm saying, we've registered the complaint.
Right.
Then they, they, they don't just go out there. Unless you're flying a higher flag in front of your company, they don't do much.
I'm happy to talk about this more often.
Okay.
Moving on to the gender. It's a slight uptick in female. Uh, so seventeen, seventeen percent female, just a slight uptick, which isn't good.
How many, what, what is the total circle of workers, how many people? Hundred, twenty?
Oh, no, no, and you'll, I'll show you both. Uh, but this is from January to now, and realize that there's some carryover, so this is for thirty people. And you know that the program is small, we were short staffed, and since we hired him, we've seen an uptick in referrals. We're getting a lot of referrals for that, for the program, which has not been great. Uh, because it's kind of hard to say no. Moving on to the demographics, we pretty much mirror the jails' population. Uh.
Alright, fine.
You have a clicker.
You actually, yeah.
Um, so we do pretty much mirror, um. The jail population, maybe a slightly more diversity, um, but, uh, I'm really not, just in census is small, and, um. We have a little more diversity clearly than, um. We're just, neither of our programs, any of the three programs, alternative sentencing, mental health, the treatment court, just, we're not kind of a diverse population, because we do pretty much mirror the jail. Except for the federal inmates, and they're not. Program, so I know there's some more diversity in the jails of our set. Local population. But, uh. Looks like a little more. This year, but we'll see, you know, I've been tracking this for a few years now, and if you guys wanna see like five years at a time, in a year or two, I'll be able to track that as well. So moving to the next slide, um, the age demographics. Um. It's interesting, we've gotten a couple of older people this past. Okay, that's, you know, that should say, uh. Slide should say generally through, uh. In that, so I just updated it all. Um, sorry, Doug.
There is twenty six to forty, that's expected, but.
Uh, he was meant to be what?
Lower.
Yeah, um, well, I mean, a lot of people get arrested, but they don't enter the program until they've done a few things, or anything.
Right.
Okay. So, you know, you do a lot of silly stuff when you're young, and then. When you're into the program, what I have found is, a lot of people at the age of forty kind of reassess their life. Want the help and want treatment. Wanna get focused and, you know. Build better relationship with their families, get their licenses, get house, so. Not surprised at the largest population, thirty six to forty, and the people that are a little bit older. You'll see a fifty, sixty, seventy, it's just a little individual, it's very complex mental health issues. Sort of elevated pretty much everyone, and it's kind of sad to see people at that age in our program. Next slide is, uh, mental health diagnosis, and the following slide is last year's, and. True to what everyone's hearing in the community, the highest populations, that you're gonna see highest diagnosis of P T S D. And A D D, A D H D. A lot of people in all the programs suffer from A D D and A D H D. And I'm on trauma responsive, and that not all of our people, I would say eighty five to ninety percent in all the programs, you're gonna find people with complex trauma. Bless you, and so we're working hard with local community members. To make the community more trauma aware, I'm part of trauma responsive, and then, uh, the friends have done two presentations. With the chamber to address trauma. Yeah. Diagnosed, bless you. And so. See a variety of diagnoses, so this doesn't represent, some people have several diagnoses, this is not by individuals, it's by each individual's diagnosis.
Do you have access to a psychiatrist?
Uh, we do now, uh, it took a long time, but Mindy Asbury.
Yeah.
So I met her.
Mindy's great.
Yes, so I met her at the mapping, sit mapping training, and we've had meetings since then, and she actually just introduced me to Deb Holby. At M F S as well, which is promoted, so I have a meeting with Deb tomorrow.
Physician.
Is she a mental health patient?
She's, uh, M F S, she was just promoted. So, uh, Mindy did this interview. Deb, she was just promoted at M F S with the associate director of health services at M F S. At houses, their M D, A P R N, and nursing staff members, and she has full oversight of all the programs. So we're meeting with Deb tomorrow.
Okay, she's, she's a physicianer.
I'll forward this to you, I, I don't know if she was.
She has her power.
No, she's, oh, she, oh, she's an A P R N. So, uh, you're gonna see there's not a drastic difference between twenty three and, um, you go to. Next slide is year twenty three.
No, I'm just.
Um, don't distract. Uh, the highest diagnosis is once again, P T S D, a lot less people with A D D, A D H D, but we also had a smaller census last year. For a variety of reasons.
You can't all trauma for P S, P T S D.
No, 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 that's like severe. Like stress, sort of, the people, it's the diagnosis, right? There's lots of people, I mean, trauma's not a diagnosis, and I'm sure. Everybody has some form of trauma, maybe three people will say they don't have trauma, and then when they do the full bio cycle of social analysis, they'll realize that they do have trauma. A lot of people, we just accept what we've been through life and don't realize that it's a traumatic event. And everyone in this room, I'm sure, we've all had trauma. But we are more resilient, we all have a free, pro social sober network to support us from the trauma, a lot of our individuals have no one. And then they're in complex mental health issues, just get exacerbated and unfortunately end up in the. So, moving to the next slide, and I'm happy to answer any questions about diagnoses. Judy probably is way more better at that than I am. The next slide, uh, you'll see a change in the primary drug of choice, and I fixed the color, I think last year Cheryl said like. I've been dealt by things, colors were more of a contrast. But, and this is sort of an interesting evolution, so I think it was in twenty two or maybe in twenty one. That only in behavioral health court do we allow medical marijuana. Uh, so, originally alcohol was number one drug of choice that we were seeing. For, uh, behavioral health court clients in twenty two and twenty three, it was still leading. And still the highest in twenty four, but we're starting to see a lot of other diagnoses, and so what I did for you, uh. Is compare the primary and secondary, and I can even, I now have them tracking their third drug of choice. And this, this varies differently, you'll see, uh, like in treatment court, we have more severe diagnoses, you'll see opiate disorder, cocaine disorder as their primary drug of choice. So while you'll see that a little bit in this, in behavioral health courts. It's mostly, you're seeing alcohol and marijuana as their primary drugs of choice.
The five, it's heroin and crack.
Yeah, uh, yes. Um, how, um.
That would fit.
Think that's the how, yeah.
Yes, you can call.
So what I will say is that there's been a trend across the country, and now we're seeing heroin's really dwindling, heroin in many years, and all, I, you know, look at U A's daily, so it's that. But right now, I'm seeing a lot more meth. And so I guarantee you the slide will look different next year, if, across all the programs, a lot more meth, a lot more stimulants. In combination of meth and crack, and unfortunately, we have a lot of people prescribing, community prescribing. Adderall to people with stimulant use disorder, it's really not really great outcomes. Secondary drug of choice, next slide, you'll see marijuana, yeah. Still pretty high. Lot of people, but you'll see that gets reduced by twenty four, because at that point, a lot more people on have medical marijuana. So Judy and Emily are really careful, they must get a doctor to know if the medical marijuana, they may find. Seats from the dispensary showing that this is where they purchase. There are a lot of people using marijuana, saying, oh, I'm getting my card, I'm getting my card, so, uh, it's not allowed, you have to have the card. And I'll just, to clarify, treatment court is completely access based, so no medical marijuana is allowed currently, there's a lot of discussion at the national conferences. And no alcohol in treatment court, but behavioral health court, no alcohol is allowed, and medical marijuana is the only substance that's been approved. So far, and I don't know if all this is gonna change with the statewide board in or so. Be able to get to lots of changes coming up. Next slide, maybe more interesting to you, um, for instance, the housing at intake.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think at the year end, December, I'll do how to get intake referral and housing at completion. Just so you can see, but this is really different, uh. A lot more people in this program living with family members. Still a large percentage of people unhoused. Thirty four percent.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so it's hard.
Well, if you look at it, it's really seventy four percent. Families providing housing themselves. Seventy four percent are unable to provide their own housing.
Um, you're on the hundred ninth board, I wouldn't, I wouldn't classify that, why would you classify that?
Uh, they have a place that, and they have, that's considered a home.
Well, yeah, I know that. But, but, but as far as.
And then.
As far as an individual being, you know, capable to get along in society. If they can't provide them, their own housing, that, that, that's sort of a problem. Relying on family at this age forty is not.
It's, it's because of this generation, it's being, uh, it's being looked at differently now. Then, but you're, you're, you're not wrong in what you're saying, but because this new generation is not just choosing. Some have to go move back home, or, you know, after college, or after leaving the service, or whatever, or they have a tech job, whatever. They have to live at home because they can't find it, or they can't afford the housing costs that are, that are occurring. But, um, others are choosing to, that's their option, they could be in an apartment, but they're choosing. To save some level of money, because their parents will say, instead of sixteen hundred dollars for a single room. It's, uh, let's just pay us eighteen, eighteen, uh, eight hundred. You know, because the parents want them to own something of it, they want some, there's cause, and that's, at least that's what we're hearing, so.
You know, another factor that I think I have to look at, I'm not sure if I have all the data, is what this was like pre-pandemic, right? It's totally pandemic, a lot of people. And then the housing rates, like, we have, honest to God, Seamus and Lisa spend a good part of almost every day looking at apartments. Going on Zillow, Seamus does this, we're in touch with all landlords, we're in touch with, this is for treatment court, but, you know, they share the list now with Judy, uh. It, the spice up run has skyrocketed last year. And, and so, even if people could afford it, they don't, and we have. In the treatment court, and now it's available to behavioral health court and pathway homes program with, um, keen housing. And it allows people who are doing successfully in the program, we make the recommendation, and they pay twenty percent of their income. So those people are housed, but even, I have two people with the voucher from Keenan, they still can't buy a car. And also understand that a lot of these people have been addicted, a lot of these people owe back money, a lot of people, so you're a landlord, you own a wonderful apartment, you do a background search, you see twenty felonies, you're not gonna lease them. So it's really hard, not only, uh. Because the increase in rent locally, but also their criminal records, mental health. It's a, it's a little bit of red flag for a landlord.
I, I'm, the only reason I'm surprised that the family number's so high. Is what we've heard in the past is, they burned that bridge over and over and over again, I mean, when you, somebody was saying earlier about. Um, you know, getting, you know. In the program or not in the program, whatever, it's, what we've heard from individuals is that, when they steal. They get caught on the hundredth time, not the first time.
Right.
Unless they're really, really, really bad, and they get caught the first time, which may be a blessing to them. But that, and so, in the meantime, that stealing a hundred times, majority of that's from family. And so that the family has nothing to, wants nothing to do with them, so I'm just, I'm, I was surprised that that forty percent was there, because, you know, the.
You wouldn't see the same in treatment court, and I don't have that slide in the treatment court presentation, and I think I'll add that if I can pull together.
Yeah.
Uh. I think maybe, most of them don't, like, I can't even think of one right now, this one tried to live with the mother, and the stepfather kicked her out, another one tried to live, and they said no. So in treatment court, you'll see, like, there's, I can't even think of one right now, but I'll, I'm gonna create that slide for the presentation.
Yeah.
Uh, just so you can see the comparison. Um, moving on, housing referrals made through the program, four for Southwestern, one, I think she'll live anyone recently to Emerald House, I just added that. Five in the shelter, sadly, one in a tent, two to Respite. Um. Tru, 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 three other, and two at M P S, and M P S has been amazing for all the programs, but the waitlist is really long. They weren't gonna expand, but they've been really great.
And M P S, just for people listening in or, or sitting in, is Manana.
Not Pierce.
Yeah.
And, uh, they've been really collaborative with us, I know David Ports is the interim director, I think he'll probably be leaving soon. And he's been great, but they've also let us, uh, to our, we do a cooking class for the treatment board for U N H, and they let us use their kitchen. And we let members use, be part of the program as well, so they've been really great collaborative partners, the community.
Do you not use, uh, is there, I don't see keen housing on here, is that just because the waitlist is so long that you can't? Get them in?
You know, that could be the other, and I'll have to talk to Judy about it, because. She had someone who was on the waitlist, and when they reclassified them, accepted, they were homeless and didn't get in, so they lost. Their time, and I said, just reach out to our contacts, because we can get them posted with them. And then they were able to get them recertified, I just don't know if he got the housing or not.
Yeah.
So I'll just update Judy with that, uh. It, so they have four slots with Keenan, and we have twelve slots for them. But the hardest part about making the referral for the pathway home program is it's gotta be someone long term, and behavioral health programs are typically ninety days. I mean, some people in the program, a year or two.
Yeah.
It's a much shorter program, so to make that recommendation. They stabilize and well-known and successful. So it's easier, a little bit easier in treatment court to make that recommendation. Moving on to sort of a more tragic slide, um, overdose history in behavioral health court. And individuals have experienced overdose at some point in their lives. Twenty, just, we're happy, uh, have no history of overdose. Total frequency of overdose, this is all self-reported sixty seven times, number of times in our family's use on these individuals is fifty. Sort of brings me back to how happy I am that. Got them in the lockbox boxes in all the county buildings, and do that bridge on the tender. You have one in ours, you guys have, how many here, if you wanted to here?
We have two, yeah.
We always have Narcan in our office, uh, and through all the programs, we do Narcan trainings, and we give out Narcan. We have a lot of Narcan, if you ever need it, we get some from. From the parents, sometimes from the feds, and sometimes through the door, we have a lot of resources. And, uh. It's got county data on overdose history for twenty twenty four, we'll share the treatment court. Uh, there's a new medical examiner who is sending the update now. So I'll provide all the overdose, sharing news of the treatment. Helpful, moving on to the next slide, uh. These are more, the highlighted agencies are the more recent referrals, but we work with a lot of different agencies, and these are just agency for presidential treatment referrals, so Live Free. And their rep Sean just came to our office last week, we've used Turning Point, Antrim House. Bonfire Avenue, has process recovery, Barnum, Keystone, and Gate House. Uh, and the highlight ones are the most recent referrals for twenty twenty four. The next slide, and this just makes me happy to see that. A lot more, when I first started, we had zero access to. Treatment except for. Eventuality seasons. Doesn't look like they currently have anyone on method, so.
The cost for someone to be in the program is two thousand six hundred and seventy six dollars or seven dollars. So huge savings, they're not being incarcerated and they're getting services and being re-entered into the community. So I do think the program's really worthwhile. Um, and the last thing is with the hiring of the statewide coordinator, there's gonna be a lot of changes. To programs and I've sort of made it abundantly clear that we will make changes once we receive funding. So every mental health court in the state. Functions differently, whereas drug courts were all aligned, we have similar phases, best practices. Best practices still exist currently for mental health courts, it's been a lot of research over the last five to ten years. And they're working on it, so it's still recommending guidelines, not best practice, there's not a lot of research yet. And I think in two to three years we'll be able to publish guidelines. That are more like, please do this, this is what we've seen works type things, so. Um, some of the programs in behavioral health court around the state, mental health courts has phases, we don't have that in treatment court yet, I mean in behavioral court yet. I think we'll move towards that once we get the funding from the state. So right now, I'm and Judy are of the ill, if it's up, don't change it. Uh, we will make changes once we receive funding if those are recommended.
The question is probably. I think it's around seventy percent of the people who are incarcerated who need a program like this, did they get it?
I think with the staffing that we have in-house, they do, they do the best they can. With, with, with the counselors that we have and the latex that we have, they're, they're running different types of programming to support. Those levels, I mean, remember eighty-seven percent are coming into the corrections facility with some level of addiction of that eighty-seven. About seventy, seventy-five percent have some mental health issue on top of that. So I think they're having to address that on either side of the spectrum as best they can within confines that they have. But at the same time, you've seen because of bail reform and other issues. That our population at the corrections facility isn't what it was ten years ago. And so these type of programs are dealing with people to keep them out of our corrections facility and get that level that. Who would have been in our corrections facility ten years ago? So I think that's part of the story too. So I think they are getting it. Are they getting it to the level that, that, that what Alison and her program is able to do? I don't know, because they're in the community and there's more options. But they are getting addressed.
So I mean, just piggyback on that, so the bail statute, or when I first started ten years ago, everyone was held. Right, and so they were incentivized to get out of. Chester County House Corrections and Department Corrections by entering programs. Now no one is held. So people that really want treatment, you know, it's they'll finally get it after they've been incarcerated so many times. But a lot of people, they know they're gonna get out and not much is happening. To bail reform and, you know, where people years ago would get prison sentences for possession of cocaine, that's just happening work. Last slide, my last slide. Oh, no, you don't have it. Okay, it's in the powerpoint, sorry. So my last slide is a thank you to the commission, following one in that look back. For your many years of service in community and support. Thank you, Terry, for staying on. Thank you, Jack, for staying on as treasurer. So sorry, that's not the powerpoint, but I said that's in your little. You're welcome for this. So any questions?
As always, very thorough, appreciate it, it creates the insight of what's going on in the program. I think you guys are doing great work.
And just, I mean, one more thing is that, you know, Doug and I have the meeting this afternoon on a pre-trial program. Which would, you know, I know Chris Wolfens really wanted that, which would allow a lot more people to get services. And that's one of the things that came out, a few things from the scent mapping of Cheshire County were. Working sobriety house, sober house, sober living and a pre-trial. And Suzanne and already taken the grants, so I think that'll be a great thing for Cheshire County, a lot more people get served. And that'll address sort of your question of pre-trial services, so they don't end up in these other programs. Thank you, everybody.
We've been talking about this for four or five years and then through the Keen, I would say you're right. I do have the scholarship program.
You sent it to me.
Yes.
Um, so Patrick now, the Patrick's down the hall for us. Schooling, it's for schooling and.
A scholarship for people wanting to take. College level courses, even if only one or two courses.
Unsung heroes.
Unsung heroes, yes, unsung heroes. Um, the Rotary Club would, would, would love to. Fund classes up to a thousand or two thousand dollars per year, so even after I'm off. State Mission Committee, um.
I will, absolutely. We've tried, we had one person who was gonna go back to school and change his mind. I've tried, because I love when you send me this. And I resend it out to my staff. For the unsung heroes and the Kenji scholarships as well. Yes, thank you for that reminder, I appreciate it. Any other questions? Thanks, everybody. Lot of questions and conversations. Thank you. Good luck.
I, well, you know, just before you leave though, are you still short of that member? So they. You have.
Judy, Emily.
And Emily, is Emily though? No, but. I get confused, who does, no, alright, now I got it, now I've got it. Yes, thank you, yeah, 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 yeah.
Hopefully we'll be hiring people for pre-trial services. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Cheers, I hear you again.
Moving on, my report this week, it's a light, it's a light agenda this week, um, so far. Though in theory, it could be out sooner than later, but that's in theory. And I wanna start off with, with, um, we do have the commissioners barbecue at eleven thirty today. And in the little park next to, uh, NGM. So please make your way over and, and enjoy and sit amongst the staff and break bread with them and go from there, so.
Are we supposed to help serve or not?
Nah, this one, they usually have enough staffing, we can ask, usually it's just. You get to sit and have lunch with the staff and talk to them about what's going on and it's just a nice time for, for everybody and it's. You know, I mean, the other campuses have their opportunities, but this is the keen campus where they have, uh, where all the, everybody comes over.
Yeah, and they do have people.
It is actually the staff from the Maplewood. And it's, uh, it's, it's actually the vendor. They come down with their staff and it's great that they, they do that, yeah.
It's the Grange typically, or the, not the.
Chris, I'll be handing out the longevity certificates today at the launch.
Are you gonna do that in song and dance?
Um, interpretive dance.
Interpretive dance, very.
When she gives me mine, she'll do a really good interpretation.
Of thirty-five years of suffering.
Five decades.
Man, you're old. Yeah, he's still younger than you. Alright, um, I'm gonna start with, uh, yesterday. Uh, it's been a busy week actually with, with the, um, with the adoption of the, of the changes that did the budget last, which I thought. Be honest with you, it went extremely smooth. Um, and, um. Uh, so I, I just think that, that, that the overall, that the executive committee and the delegation have come to trust that. What we're bringing forward, we can explain it in great detail and they trust that what we're doing is, is, is right for the community, so. It wasn't, it was nice, I mean, when it started at seven and we were done by seven thirty. Um, so that's, that's, that's okay, because, you know, they, they had all the information ahead of time, they could have asked question, there were some clarity questions. Early on, but o- other than that, it was a, a nice, a nice meeting and so everything moved forward. Yeah, and some of those things we'll be working next week on, starting to put the disbursement, um, forms together so that, then the, uh. Um, the finance department can, um, write the checks and then we'll, and we'll be in the meantime contacting those individuals to. Come in and actually receive the checks here, we're not just gonna bail them out to them, um, we like to take pictures with it. We, we can use some of them for, for Facebook and stuff, that's more, it's just for historical purposes, I'd like to know that we, we gave checks out to somebody. So. Yeah, that's it, yeah, I, I'm so about all that. Do the whole.
Yeah. For the record, that this only costs ten dollars to the county, but we did have a giant fake check.
Yeah. The fake check, yeah.
Can we just get one, one of those and just use?
It's a, yeah, it's just that if they can just do the thing where they can take this thing that's around my stomach out a little bit, so that I look more.
I need Photoshop.
Yeah, alright. So I know Jack, I know Jack's just loving this conversation, um.
I never saw that, uh. View of Jack before.
Oh, sideways?
Sideways and, you know, side down.
It's a, it's a political statement.
So the, I had, I had, uh, yesterday, the community kitchen came in, um, yesterday because I had said that, you know. Uh, Representative Eaton had said, you know, how are we doing with security throughout the region and it's a real concern. And, you know, we had given them money to do pop-ups, um, um, pantries. Food pantries, uh, around the area, and I wanted to hear where things stood and I'm telling you, I don't. I, I'm very impressed with the work that they've done in a very short period of time, so we had three individuals come in. And they really hit upon what they've been doing and how they're not just setting up food pantries, they're working with the pantries that are there now. The pantries in our communities right now are suffering on two levels, one, they're having a hard time finding the food. They're having a hard time finding the staff. So, and, and a lot of staff are new coming in and they don't understand how to care for food. Uh, how to care for food and how to, um. You know, store food correctly and.
A lot of these pantries don't have duration, they just have to just pause it.
And, and what they're finding is that they're, they're, the pop-up pantries that they're having, they're finding people that they've never seen come through. Coming to their pantries, they're finding people that find out where the next pop-up one is and they're somehow finding rise to that. What we've talked about all, all along is this isolation that's going on in our communities. And that they're really developing the infrastructure and that they'll be next year, they're going to focus on a pilot. Of really, you know, maintaining four, four, working with four communities and then, uh, uh, not over the next three, uh. Over the next year, working with four communities and, and the year after that, working with another four and another, to really develop. The infrastructure, supporting that over time.
Sort of like a mules on wheels.
It's more of the, the pop, it's still, it's gonna be the pop-up, it's not the, it's, it's a box, it's box, it's not, it's not, you know, hot, it's, it's a box thing where they come in, they get their box and they go home. And, um, and I, I just, you know, it, I was just really impressed in, they're going to come because there is gonna be an increase. Request, you know, that we give them currently twenty thousand, but to run this program, they feel like they, they need to have some support and help. And, um, so their focus in the, in, in next year will be Fitzwilliam, Richmond, Winchester and Gilson. That they're really gonna work in those communities to strengthen those, and those communities, and when I say strengthen, they don't walk away. But that they've had, they run, uh, pop-ups there and they're really. And, um, being successful and this is, uh, on a monthly basis, they've been doing it and. So they've hired somebody that just focuses on just this task alone. And this is what we've been talking about, talking about all along, it's really coming up with a, with a way that's not county-run. That others that actually know the business can do, and so, um. Yeah, they're, like I said, we've, I've said that, you know, with the commissioners and then with the executive committee, if that's an increase you're gonna have, then, you know, we just need to look at. You know, you telling your story in the greater, great detail that you've done with me today and I appreciate, I appreciate, appreciate what you brought to the table and the work you've done. So, again, um, was, uh, just looking for a conversation, but they really laid it out clearly on what they've done and what their vision is moving forward. And I'm excited by that. So, um, I've said this before, I just wanna make sure and make, again, for the record that, um, we did an RFP for the Red Barn. Um, and we received one application, um, for, from that RFP that was, that was run. And it was Griffin, uh, construction. We, they've come in with a pricing that meets the, the request that we need for that ozone upgrade, so. I've given them the ability to, to move forward, um, on that.
So you closed the RFPs?
Mm-hmm, yeah, the RFPs ran for, uh, three weeks. And that's, we got one, so.
Long since within budget.
What's possible to be managed?
It's not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. And, um, and then there's another seventy, uh, fifty-nine thousand dollars, we're gonna be putting solar on the roof. And that's all grant, those are all, those are all funds that are, um, that are monies that we utilize from other sources, it's not taxpayers' money. Okay? Um, wanted your opinion, but I'm looking at, with every election comes orientation. And in the past, we've done one long session. And I'm thinking this time around to do two Mondays, one Monday prior to the December eighth. Meeting and then the second Monday here, and so this is what I'm thinking is that we invite any and all. To come to the, um. Nursing home, so that Catherine can have time, um, uh, to meet and, and, and just talk about what they're doing at the nursing home. And, uh, then they would leave there and drive to the Department of Corrections where Doug would have an opportunity to talk about. Um, the, the DOC and at either place, we would give enough time for a tour. And then, and then move on, and then the second meeting would be here. Prior, uh, to all that's going on on the, on that second Monday of December, um. To go through all other programming, and that way I think it gives people, I think it's, it's a lot to do in one sitting. So.
Does the DOC get through a new bus?
No, they, we still have the sixteen-seater there, it's something that, that I'm guessing will be on some level in the budget this year. But even so, yeah, but we've done that before, I, I think people like to just get in their own car and drive. And so that's what we would do, we would start at the, at Maplewood, end up at the DOC, and then people could go home after that, I'm looking at probably about a four-hour. Period of time for that, because you'd have an hour for, you know, up to an hour for, uh, Catherine to present and questions. And then touring, get in our car, go to the DOC, give, you know, twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes for. For Doug to present and then a tour of the facility and then everybody can go home. And maybe a little cheese and crackers somewhere in between. So, and then here, what we would do is probably, and we would have everybody have a block of time. And we just could bing to bing, we'd be doing it right after each other, and, um, when we're all said and done. Um, we, we just, we just go right into me, we have dinner and then we go into the meeting and, uh, commissioners talk about their budget. And. Then, it, then we move on.
County elected.
Correct, so that's what I'm thinking about, any feedback, any thoughts? Yeah, okay.
Any changes as well, too, because.
Yeah, some. In the past, we've given, we've given each individual three documents, one, the county report. Two, a document that we developed in relationship with, um, New Hampshire Association of Accountants. Three, a lot of the statutes that drive who we are, why we do it, so that people have the information, whether they choose to. We could, you know, that's, that's fine, we don't usually give them a budget book because the budget books aren't really there. They wouldn't be ready, or would they be ready?
They don't get ready until the public hearing on December.
Okay.
I think the only, you know, just using a, a generic one. Adequate, I suppose, just to give them a feel. Last year's budget, whatever, just to give them a feel.
Yeah.
Of what one looks like and how.
Yeah.
Other counties go and all.
Yeah, but we're, we are going to, the, the second meeting is here, second meeting would be happening on the second Monday of December.
So, well, wait a minute, let's back up here. The. Commissioners proposed but asked to be out by Sunday first.
Yeah.
Every delegation member will be getting a copy. So they will all have their twenty, twenty-five percent in. So.
And just for my, just for my historical, uh, purposes. Dan, when the election occurs, does swearing in go happen? Prior to January first? That's what I thought, so they'll be sworn in, the new individuals would be sworn in.
And that happens in Concord, right? Yeah.
I think they gets, they, they get sworn in up in Concord, uh, during the first week of January, I believe.
It flexes back and forth, Jack, sometimes it's in December, sometimes it's January.
Okay.
That's. They're, they're. I thought they were in effect prior to the public hearing in December. So when we. It's not the whole delegation that's there at the public hearing.
It's a new delegation in December, they're not always sworn technically sworn.
But they are.
They are official.
Okay, just wanted to get that in my head a little bit and because I know the commissioners would not be sworn in until that, the, the, January.
Right, but they're, they're all commissioners and representatives elect, so it doesn't really matter whether it's sworn in or not.
Okay.
All right. Have any bags left over from the, um. Conference in Manchester, because that would be something good to give the newbies.
Maybe, maybe ten.
Oh, well, we can look and see if. Yeah, yeah, I think, put everything in that, that's a good idea.
Give them buy-in and ownership.
Yeah, that's fine. Um. So that's where we're, we're standing, that's what we're thinking about doing, um. Just wanted to tell you that I've given, um, Rob Hart the go-ahead for the sidewalk and for the windows. The RFPs were, were done on both of those and, um, he took the lowest bids to, to move forward on. Um. There is no meeting next. There is no meeting next Wednesday. Um, that, that is the twenty-eighth, because we have a, we have been able to schedule a meeting. With the Director of Homeland Security at ten AM to discuss how we can move forward in addressing. Um, funding for the, uh, Southwest Fire Mutual Aid Dispatch, so there's no meeting next, next Wednesday.
And you'll be meeting in Concord at their place?
That is correct, yes.
That Smokey Bear.
Yeah, and we'll send you, we've already put together an agenda, we can, we can send you that, what we have. Um.
Okay.
It's, it's getting interesting, we're having a lot of conversations. I think, you know, I, I think there's a good chance that we could hear one way or the other in the next two weeks. On if we're going to receive any funding, um, um, for the, from any, uh, American Rescue Plan funding. That the cat state, state may still have, we'll see. Um, I'm hopeful that we get something out of it, but, um, I can't rely on that, so that's why we're continuing to move forward, no matter what. With Homeland Security for two reasons, one, to see if there is an opportunity for that, but just as important. We're gonna, um, Todd Horner from Southwest Regional Planning Commission, we've asked him to attend the meeting. And at that meeting, he's gonna have a brief on how Southwest Regional Planning Commission can work with towns to update. Uh, or develop a, uh, uh, emergency mitigation plan for their towns and then. Uh, and so that's, and, and there's funding, there's funding through Homeland Security for that, there's grants for that. And so we're gonna be hopefully getting that.
Meaning community garden or Westmoreland, it's two states.
Yeah.
Not really a meeting, it's just a.
They were just invited to show us, you know, they're having like some type of function or something.
It's a little rec, yeah, it's a little recognition event to kind of shine some light on. The activities and the value of the, of the garden out there.
Yeah. Jack, for history, um, is that something that you worked with Antioch on developing?
Well, Antioch actually came into the rescue, it started out, um. With some other garden club and I can't, I remember off the top of my head exactly what it was, but then, but then those volunteers kind of petered out. And, um, you know, uh, at some point, we were like, wait, you took all this arable farmland out of service and now you're. You're, you're, you're unable to sustain the garden, so somehow or other, and I don't remember, because it was a while ago. Antioch kind of picked it up and they felt that this was, uh, uh, within their lane and. And so they've actually done a lot of work to resuscitate and maintain the, the garden.
Yeah, so and we've done, and you'll see that we've done some work out there, there's still work to be done. On the, the individuals that we, we're gonna move forward with. Um, they're just on other jobs right now, but they're gonna come in, we've had a lot of trees that had, were overgrown, they, they've been taken down. Uh, but a lot of them are interlocked with the, with the fencing that goes around it, so we have to take the fencing down. Then they have to saw down the rest of it, then they stump the rest of it out and then we move on. Um, Aaron Newman, who is the facilities director, is going to get loam and put it around the edges so that they can then seed it. And then they'll be able to mow it moving forward so that the growth can occur again like it has in the past. And he said it will take all of ten minutes, once, once this grass grows in, it'll take ten minutes for them to do, it's not a big, a big lift. So, um.
So is that, is that the garden we saw many months ago, which includes some of the graves of some of the original, um. Who died at the county farm?
No, if you go down, what is that?
That was the same day, well, that was the same day, but we went, we went to the garden first, which is by the sewer treatment.
Where we sell the PP.
Yeah.
Yeah. My, my thing is, is what, and what I've told Antioch, the woman from Antioch, is that, uh, his biggest issue I have right now is that we're gonna have to. Keep up with the growth of the garden, with the trees, they have beautiful, beautiful, different types of apple trees there. But some of them are thirty and forty feet high and, and it's, and, and there's apples on it, I just don't want them to drop on me when they let go, but. But they, they look, you know, fantastic, and so, and she agrees, and so we're just. And we're, we're just gonna s- see how we, we, we can get that between the two of us, because they need to be a player in that too. Right.
Yeah, and that's part of the ongoing maintenance of the area, I mean, it was looking pretty dumpy there for some years. And, um, I, I haven't looked at it much lately, I know they've done some work to try to. Clean it up and trim it up and that sort of thing, but, you know, if we're not gonna maintain those trees, um.
Yeah.
We should get them out of there and, and, and remove the stumps, uh, I'm just, you know, it always troubles me, that's such great farmland. Um, and it's really out of service now, so it's a valid, I suppose it's a indirect value. What the master garden area provides for people, but it, it's gotta be adequately maintained.
Correct, I don't disagree with you, one of the reasons, when you go up there now, you'll see that we are working towards that. And what I talked to Catherine and Aaron about is we need to stop thinking that. It's Maplewood and the other things that are up on West Berlin, it is the West Berlin campus as a whole. And we worked hard to get the DOC removed out of, out of there. Um, and to now with, with the Red Barn upgrade, so that there can be a classroom there, so that. When others are up there, they can actually go in and have the classroom and then leave the classroom and actually experience. What they're talking about in our, in, uh, in our lands that we have, and so, um, I think they get that. And, um, so they're coming up with a plan on how to, how to address all of that up there, I mean, we'll, we'll deal with the contracts. Um, of the farmers up there, but the land itself needs to be something that we need to talk about.
Being adopted, right, by.
Right.
And they're still active.
Yeah, they still have. Very much so, yeah, that, that's why they wanna have that conversation, uh, with, and show you what they've been doing, so. Um, so it's, it's, I think we're getting there slowly, but I, and I think it's, it's. Um, so it's, it's, I think we're getting there slowly, but I, and I think it's, I think the campus looks a lot better than it did. Ten years ago. And so we're just gonna continue working on improving it and um. And go from there. So um, that's where we're at.
Question, when you talked about the red parts, so is that gonna just be for the red barn itself? There's gonna be enough power to. Shoot over to the sewer treatment plant.
I believe my understanding is that there will be some level of usage for for the sewage plant, not the water plant. Yeah. And actually. We have the capabilities to ask. Uh, we have seventy-nine thousand dollar grant that came in. So we're using fifty-some of it on the barn. We could actually put standalone. To help offset any cost at the uh uh sewer plant. I think that's what we're. I think it's in that, that's still in the development stage of what we talked about.
Yeah, because those.
Either put it or just put it on the other roofs that are up there and then tag it in.
So if you look at those, those facilities that compared to others, that that's where their higher use is.
Yeah.
Uh, because they, you know, they're, they're running motors and things twenty-four seven on.
Yeah. So. All right, um. We are sending out two press releases this week. We've done now six episodes of the podcast and. So we are going to announce that we are doing this uh dish. Um. This podcast and it's just another step in our evolution of, you know, how we can communicate with the, with the communities, that they can better understand. Uh county government and other issues that are, that we think are, or or are. Are topics that we think are important to the county along with that. Um, the second one will be um for. Uh, the the monies we received for Southwest Fire Mutual Aid of the nine hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, the congressional spending request. Um, we'll also tell you that um I've agreed unless you guys say no to me to do one Saturday a month. On the radio from eight to ten in the morning. Uh, Dan Mitchell asked me to do that. I just figured it's just another avenue that we can set up. We're communicating. With with the uh and have you all, have you on as guests at times. I actually think that I'm gonna have you on pretty early um in one of my shows because I wanna talk about uh Cheshire Power. Uh, and and really get that going, uh, that conversation going. So.
Public, public hearings on Monday, Saturday. Still true.
Yeah, I mean, we just, more towns are just jumping on because they, it's, you know, everybody's crying about the electrical cost, but. We have a plan to meet there.
And I just looked at my bill. My supply was only like forty-eight bucks. My delivery was ninety-seven.
Yes. It's ever source, it's a monopoly, it's, it's criminal what they're doing and they're, and they, and and I blame the PUC. Because they're, well, they're appointed by by the governor and. They're asking for more money. And their shareholders' numbers are through the roof. And. You, so take some of that money over here and move it over here. Why are you putting on the burden of the, of the users?
Well, that's what used to happen, you know.
Right.
You would take a certain amount of the profit and and plow it into reinvestment.
Yeah.
You know, of of infrastructure and such and 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 then, you know, you take a a huge uh tax break on that. But now they don't need to do that because they just get free tax breaks. Plus, they get to keep the money for profit.
Yeah.
And not put any money into, you know, it, you know, their infrastructure. Look at the substation in Hinsdale. I mean, it's, it's, it's criminal.
Yeah.
Crazy. They, they haven't done a thing with it in thirty years.
Right.
Totally inadequate, stopping, stopping the town of Winchester from uh uh. One hell of a big project to cover that uh PC Lawrence uh uh property that has been a, you know.
Well, well, and 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 it's, 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 it's almost hand in hand in my world because. You know, EverSource at one point did wanna do the whole um keen to West Berlin build out. Uh, and it would have been meant that they would have had to use, they would, we could have had a battery installation that they would have paid for. We wouldn't pay for it. We could have done some solar with that to help into that. I mean, there's a whole lot of things that was gonna happen out of that. And the P U P U C said no. And that run is one of the most disrupted runs in Cheshire County. And so it's like, one's nailing us, the other one's blocking us from having all the secure electrical power. And it's, it's just really frustrating. And so I'm proud of the fact that we were able to, you know, push back. And at least, I mean, if we didn't do that, think about that, if we didn't do that with the transfer cost that that ever source adds on. Then we would be paying that much more overall. And it just, it's such a monopoly that. It's problematic.
It used to be a balanceboard, no wonderings.
Correct. Um. It's good. Um, just want you to know, I did uh finally, I I sent. Uh, if you go up to the bar, up to the farm and you go on the backside of the arm of the, of the major. Um. Sheep area, that the the major sheep barn. And there, there's just all kinds of trash in the backside from old cars to just all kinds. And because of that, there's, they can't get in there and there's trees growing.
Well, it's gonna be damaging the side of that, like on the side on the west side of that building.
Correct.
If it keeps on going.
So I sent another um letter. And I actually did talk to our attorney um about it too because if I wasn't gonna get a response, then, you know, my next step was gonna be. And so I did get a response. They are going to over the next month. You know, take care of that backside, take care of any, any issues back there. And then I'm still gonna have a conversation with them moving forward. So I just want you, if you go up there and you see that it's there, I've had word, you know, from them, an email from them that says states that that's gonna be taken care of. Um, I already told you about the eleven-thirty cookout. Um, Anna's gonna be doing a little bit of some, a little cha- uh um in her office. Uh, to add a a desk or two. Um, it's nothing major. And I I walked over there yesterday, walked through with her around what she was thinking about doing. And it's really that she's got some full-time position, that she has some part-time position, the people billing, billing and. She just needs like a, like a desk because that there's electrical outlets need to occur and that's about the only cost. Uh, any, in, well, any other. Fiber costs by the vendor that she has. That that, you know, for any computer, the installation that has to occur. Um. Uh. Don't, I just want you to remember that it's the fourteenth of September at one o'clock and then I. High school that you have the swearing in and. I think that's all. Oh, and and then um I I'll be working um from afar on Thursday, Friday. And Monday, but I'll be back on Tuesday, but uh I'll be, I'll be working during those times. I'm going down to uh help my daughter's farm. She needs to get some sheep to the uh. They need to go away. They have somebody that's going to take them, the males. So. Need to help with that, some other work on the farm. And then. Spin has tickets to go see the Patriots play the uh Washington, Washington Commanders on Sunday night. And he's got field tickets and he wants to take me, so. I'll go and I'll help.
If you have.
And I get to feed my grandkids, so it's all good. So I just wanna make you aware. Um. Any, and I don't have anything else uh from that. Um, I'm gonna move on. To old business. Is there any old business? Just wanna say that I had an enjoyable time. Um, your, uh, with last week at the uh. You're out at the house with the dinner and all that. It was just always nice to go out to Granite Lake and just. Breathe a little bit and relax a little bit. So thank you. Thank you. Yeah, um, any new business? Any uh consent agenda items, vote to accept the weakland manifest and then it's August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Second, any changes? Seeing none, any comments? Seeing none. Commissioner Wasback. Okay, Commissioner England and Commissioner Clark. And and just so people know that. Uh, Commissioner Wasback gave a thumbs up on approval.
Yes, I unmuted myself.
Okay. Um, calendar, any changes, anything that need to be made aware of?
No, nothing that you don't already know about, but just since I gave you the schedule today. Um, we are moved to the DOC um on Oc- October twenty-third uh in order to. Have um the swearing in and then we are at Maplewood on December fourth for the longevity lunch that. Um, we've done every year and. Is it? And then next week is canceled, just as. Oh, and actually, you know what? I'll say, uh, since next week is canceled, we move September. Be consistent. So that's no longer a year and that will be reflected.
And and since Doug is here, Doug, a quick question on um census. Fed down a little bit, but that's just a normal flow of things.
Yeah, I think so. The Fed numbers are down a little bit from where they've been. That's maybe five of those, but um it's not due to the lack of business in that area. So. Uh, yeah, a little bit low, but. Nothing else I can put my finger on except the temporary drop in Fed number.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Did I hear Davis was cutting out? No meeting next week?
No meeting next week. We're up at Homeland Security next week.
Okay. And thanks for changing that for October twenty-third, Davis.
No problem.
Okay, so you'll get a lot of us actually. Um, in, in October, we have. Swearing in and then two weeks later, get us again for the inspection.
Right.
I said, then that's, and the inspection's good because then we, you can, we talked about all the work that needs to be done up there. Maybe you can. You can tour us on some of that, so that, I mean, you just can see the boilers and all that jazz.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I know. We wanted to spend a little more time on facilities, um, since. More of those items and things are coming up as far as expenses and. Needing repairs. So, yeah, we'll earmark spending some time there with less on the inspection date.
Doug, is the paving gonna be done by then?
Paving's done, the concrete works not. Um, it should be, absolutely should be, but I don't have an exact date.
Construction, yeah, can't love it, just gotta put up with it, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Chris, don't, don't get to um uh update Dan on. The significant uh capital issues at the jail and and our thoughts about how to pay for those.
Yeah, will do.
Yeah, I'm putting, we have a list, Jack, that Les is just about done to consider. If we, you wanna go the bond route. Um. I'll have that as part of what I present for the budget and. You could decide, but there's about three or four potential items.
Yeah.
The biggest one, of course, is the cameras, but the, the water um. Tanks are on there and a couple other smaller items, but.
And when, when, when will we have that list?
Uh, you could have it sooner if you want, but I was planning to put it into some notes. At what I present on the capital budget, which is, goes to finance on September third. But if you want it sooner or in a different form, I can do that.
Why don't we do it soon and later?
Yeah, so sooner, I'd like sooner, just to be sure we uh. Can um have a good plan before we get, get to that point.
Uh, probably by tomorrow then. I know Les and I are talking about it, um, finalizing it today or tomorrow morning.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
Yeah. Just an end of life things. Nothing major.
Nothing major. A small.
Yeah, no, no, you can't buy my line, man. Small tanks.
Bring about forty thousand dollars for community kitchen and this gets strapped in your lap.
And. All right, so um we are going to go a non-public session and uh for a um, it's. RSA ninety-one dash A equals three two A, um, really is focused on compensation of any public employee. Or discipline of such player investigation of any charges against, um, so, um.
I moved to adjourn.
I know, move to go into the non-public. Are you kidding? You kidding? In a second, we're done. We're not gonna discuss it, but. Oh, no, I, just different what you're.
Go into executive session. I s- I said corrected.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Wasback.
Aye.
Commissioner England, uh, and Mr. Clark. So we're now gonna go into non-public. Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
And so we've come out of non-public uh session, uh, and in non-public session, there was. A vote taken and a decision made to enter into an employment agreement with the county administrator. Uh, on the basis that he's the only county administrator without such a contract and we felt it was timely to do so. And it was a unanimous vote. And otherwise than that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I oppose, no, the ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, guys.